We're running live, it looks great. They replaced the modulator just now. So I just want to check the sound. Something you want to say?
Thank you. You didn't have enough last time?
No.
Well, it's good to see you back. It gets to be habit formant.
You're all right with it, right? We're okay, everybody's okay with it, right? The two of us, yeah. So if they don't return.
Hi, good to see you. How's things?
Been two years.
Good morning, Monica. How you doing? Good to see you. Things alright?
Chief can't click, it's because he can't remember. But, you know, snow out. Snowing out, that would be a good one. Alright, so now, I'm gonna go to whatever we got here from my icon. Yeah, okay. Hard drive. Now, CD.
We apologize, I think Shaun told you. So, we're at a meeting. Tony's on his way. So, we're gonna just have to bear with us for a few minutes. But we'll try to move it along once we get three of us here.
Tony was with you, was he? I was, Tony was with you?
Yeah. Hold it whenever Tony gets here. So, hopefully it won't be more than five more minutes. Thank you.
Five minutes, why don't you explain what it is?
Can we shut off the lights?
I think it will come on. It'll come on. There it is. So, about a year ago, the town contracted with a company to do a video about the town of Situate, and what a great place it is to live, work, and play. And, this is going to be the premier showing of it. If I can figure out how to do this. Here it goes. Okay.
I'm Terry Bradshaw. Please join me as I leave the field for the boardroom, in search of the best and the brightest people willing to share their viewpoints.
Is that too loud?
No, I don't think. Is it alright? Nestled halfway between Boston and Gate Cod, sits the quintessential New England community, the town of Situate. Founded in 1636, it's one of Massachusetts' oldest towns, and one of the nation's best places to live, work, and play today.
We offer a welcoming and relaxing atmosphere to both our visitors, as well as our residents. We are proud of our fishing heritage, as well as our historical significance. But we also look to the future with windows and solar arrays.
Situate is home to 18,000 year-round residents, many of whom are fourth and fifth-generation families, with roots dating back to the town's early years. During the summer months, the town's population swells to around 30,000 people. Visitors come to rent summer cottages while seasonal residents enjoy their own vacation beach homes.
Situate is a wonderful family or Indian community. We have seven miles of coastline that are filled with five beautiful beaches, three golf courses, and biking and walking trails. Residents and visitors enjoy boating and fishing, as well as kayaking and swimming. You can enjoy fresh seafood at our restaurants and pubs, or do a little bit shopping in our quaint villages.
The name Situate is derived from the Wapinawg Indian word "Satuit," which means cold brook, and refers to the small stream that flows into the harbor. The town's history includes King Philip's War in 1664, and the War of 1812. Treasured and preserved parts of Situate's past are found throughout the town's 16.9 square miles.
Situate was settled around 1628, so it's one of the oldest towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We have many historical sites in town, including the Cutworth House, the Mann House, the Stockridge Griss Mill, Situate Lighthouse, and Lawson Tower that's behind me. This tower was built to hide a steel water tank in 1912.
While Situate is a town that's certainly proud of its past, it's also one that's steadily focused on its future. Town officials, citizens, and thought leaders work together to ensure Situate's continued success. Part of their vision is making the town a green community.
Situate is one of the leading communities in Massachusetts for sustainability and green initiatives. We have a wind turbine online, and soon we'll have a 15-acre solar array. These two facilities combined will provide 100% of the town's energy needs. We also have many building improvements that reduce our carbon footprint.
Situate's business environment is made up mostly of retail, restaurant, and service industries. Two village centers, Situate Harbor and North Situate Village, are at the heart of the town's economic activity.
Situate is a vibrant mix of young professionals, local merchants, longstanding family businesses, and entrepreneurs. Easy access to the ocean, the city of Boston, and the historic South Shore make us the perfect draw for an eclectic restaurant scene, a growing commuter base to the city, and wonderful boutique shops that make us a fantastic tourist destination.
The harbor and its commercial and recreational opportunities also play parts in Situate's business community.
Situate's home to an active year-round commercial fishing industry made up of field metters, draggers, and lobster vessels, and home port to over 1,000 recreational sailboats and powerboats. We also host a burgeoning sport fishing industry, so visitors who come to Situate can spend a day fishing, or enjoy a sunset cruise aboard one of several sailboats that are available for charter.
A delightful mix of rural, suburban, and seaside lifestyles, along with highly-ranked public schools, make this charming coastal town a fantastic place to live.
Situate has a tremendous amount of community spirit, along with a well-regarded school system. Over 86% of our students go on to some form of higher education. We have excellent youth and recreational programs, so it's no wonder our people have been here for generations.
Whether looking for a place to live, a town to start a small business, or just a spot to visit, Situate offers a little something for everyone. As a local says, "See for yourself."
They did an interview with DBW.
Too bad they had to cut Tony's part out.
Did they cut my 30 minutes down?
No, they got you down. They got you, did a good job. When will that be aired? What's the information behind that? What's...
So, it will be aired in 26 markets nationwide, including CNN. And then, we own the rights to it, and we have copies to distribute to various tourism and chamber commerces wherever we want.
Thank you. Being 7:20, we'll call this meeting to order. And again, we apologize for being late, but we both had a meeting we had to go to. We're gonna try, because we're running 20 minutes behind now, we're gonna try to move it along. So you people are on later, we won't keep you here too long. If it's the board's permission, I'd like to move the number five, the transfer of the liquor license, which was scheduled for 7:10, I'd like to move that first on the agenda.
Great, so move.
Okay, so moved, in seconded?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Come on. Walter, how are you?
Bradshaw, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. What would like, if you would, just introduce yourselves and give us a brief recap of what your plans are?
Great. Have a seat. Thanks.
Have a seat first.
Everybody, who are you?
Hi. Good to see you.
Brian, Aaron, and this is Erica White, along with her, she's my partner, along with Walter Sullivan, who's her attorney, in case he's got any questions we can't answer. I hope not, though.
I thought I was the idea.
We just want to give you a, we got Aaron in the back with us here, who we're working on our deal with right now, to take over his business. That's been a great business in Situate Harbor. For us to take it over and kind of give us the opportunity to come down to the harbor, it's been an area that myself and Erica have been looking at for a long time, to try to do business in. We've got a couple of businesses, as you guys are probably aware, in neighboring towns, Cohasset being one, Bia Bistro that's been around for about nine years, and Tinker Sun in Norwell. And we kind of want to have one in the middle, so that we have no days off, you know? But, we're both very much involved in the community. Erica's been a resident for like nine years, I've been a resident for about four years. I coached Situate High, I helped coach it along with Mark's brother Tucker, the Situate High rugby team. Erica does a lot of her other business in town as well, and we live within walking distance of Situate Harbor, and would love to be able to be part of the community. Fins is a great spot, we love what Aaron's been doing with the place, and you know, I looked at that spot years ago before he went in there, because Harvey Gates, who's the current landlord, wanted me to bring Bia, which is our restaurant in Cohasset, over there. The timing just wasn't right, and Aaron went in there and did a great job, and we think now is probably a good time for us to move downtown. Our concept would be one of more food-focused bar, so it wouldn't really be a bar like a pub, but not quite a restaurant either. We do want to put a larger bar in there. The dining scene has changed a lot, and a lot of people like to gather around bars and eat now, so I think we're gonna make it a very food-focused bar, and have a lot of fun with it. I'm a chef by trade, I worked in Four Seasons in Boston, the Harbor Club in Boston, and opened up Bia about nine years ago. And, since then, kind of polished off my entrepreneurial kind of restaurant operating skills, but I kind of miss the kitchen, and I want to get back to cooking, so I think this restaurant, being small enough that we can really focus on the food and make it somewhere kind of fun.
Thank you. Anything else?
Erica's done a little package along...
We got a package here, it was, thank you for sending it over. Just to recap for everybody, what the package says, it shows that their involvement in the community, both in Cohasset and in Norwell, as well as in Situate, have cooperated with the Norwell Police Department on a program to give drivers more incentive to stay sober. It is also a letter from the Cohasset Police, and I believe the Norwell Police, speaking through their, there was no negative activity at the Bia Bistro in the years that you owned it. Thank you very much for sending that on to us.
I just, I noticed one thing in the package, I'm sure maybe other restaurants do it, but it did jump out to me, that you offer free non-alcoholic drinks to people that are designated drivers. I think that's a wonderful idea. I just wanted to say that I've gone to your facility in Norwell, and it's...
The town's history includes King Philip's War in 1664 and the War of 1812. Treasured and preserved parts of Situate's past are found throughout the town's 16.9 square miles.
Situate was settled around 1628, so it's one of the oldest towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We have many historical sites in town, including the Cutworth House, the Mann House, the Stockbridge Griss Mill, Situate Lighthouse, and Lawson Tower that's behind me. This tower was built to hide a steel water tank in 1912.
While Situate is a town that's certainly proud of its past, it's also one that's steadily focused on its future. Town officials, citizens, and thought leaders work together to ensure Situate's continued success. Part of their vision is making the town a green community.
Situate is one of the leading communities in Massachusetts for sustainability and green initiatives. We have a wind turbine online, and soon we'll have a 15-acre solar array. These two facilities combined will provide 100% of the town's energy needs. We also have many building improvements that reduce our carbon footprint.
Situate's business environment is made up mostly of retail, restaurant, and service industries. Two village centers, Situate Harbor and North Situate Village, are at the heart of the town's economic activity.
Situate is a vibrant mix of young professionals, local merchants, longstanding family businesses, and entrepreneurs. Easy access to the ocean, the city of Boston, and the historic South Shore make us the perfect draw for an eclectic restaurant scene, a growing commuter base to the city, and wonderful boutique shops that make us a fantastic tourist destination.
The harbor and its commercial and recreational opportunities also play parts in Situate's business community.
Situate's home to an active year-round commercial fishing industry made up of field metters, draggers, and lobster vessels, and home port to over 1,000 recreational sailboats and powerboats. We also host a burgeoning sport fishing industry, so visitors who come to Situate can spend a day fishing or enjoy a sunset cruise aboard one of several sailboats that are available for charter.
A delightful mix of rural, suburban, and seaside lifestyles, along with highly-ranked public schools, makes this charming coastal town a fantastic place to live.
Situate has a tremendous amount of community spirit, along with a well-regarded school system. Over 86% of our students go on to some form of higher education. We have excellent youth and recreational programs, so it's no wonder our people have been here for generations.
Whether looking for a place to live, a town to start a small business, or just a spot to visit, Situate offers a little something for everyone. As a local say, see for yourself. They did an interview DBW.
Too bad they had to cut Tony's part out.
Did they cut my 30 minutes down?
No, they got you down. They got you. Did a good job.
When will that be aired? What's the, you know, information behind that? What's...
So, it will be aired in 26 markets nationwide, including CNN. And then we own the rights to it, and we have copies to distribute to various tourism and chamber commerces wherever we want.
Thank you. Being 7:20, we'll call this meeting to order. And again, we apologize for being late, but we both had a meeting we had to go to. We're going to try, because we're running 20 minutes behind now, we're going to try to move it along. So you people who are on later, we won't keep you here too long. If it's the board's permission, I'd like to move the number five, the transfer of the liquor license, which was scheduled for 7:10. I'd like to move that first on the agenda.
Great, so move.
Okay, so moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Walter, how are you?
Great, Joe, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good to see you.
What would like, if you would, just introduce yourselves and give us a brief recap of what your plans are?
Great.
Have a seat.
Thanks.
Have a seat first.
Everybody, who are you?
Aye. Good to see you.
Brian, Aaron, and this is Erica White, along with her, she's my partner, along with Walter Sullivan, who's our attorney, in case he's got any questions we can't answer. I hope not, though.
I thought I was the idea.
We just want to give you a, we got Aaron in the back with us here, who we're working on our deal with right now to take over his business. That's been a great business in Situate Harbor. For us to take it over and kind of give us the opportunity to come down to the harbor, it's been an area that myself and Erica have been looking at for a long time, try to do business in. We've got a couple of businesses, as you guys are probably aware, in neighboring towns, Cohasset being one, Bia Bistro that's been around for about nine years, and Tinker Sun in Norwell. And we kind of want to have one in the middle so that we have no days off, you know? But we're both very much involved in the community. Erica's been a resident for like nine years. I've been a resident for about four years. I coached Situate High, helped coach along with Mark's brother Tucker, the Situate High rugby team. Erica does a lot of her other business in town as well, and we live within walking distance of Situate Harbor and would love to be able to be part of the community. Fins is a great spot. We love what Aaron's been doing with the place. And, you know, I looked at that spot years ago before he went in there, because Harvey Gates, who's the current landlord, wanted me to bring Bia, which is our restaurant in Cohasset, over there. The timing just wasn't right, and Aaron went in there and did a great job, and we think now is probably a good time for us to move downtown. Our concept would be one of more food-focused bar, so it wouldn't really be a bar like a pub, but not quite a restaurant either. We do want to put a larger bar in there. The dining scene has changed a lot, and a lot of people like to gather around bars and eat now, so I think we're going to make it a very food-focused bar and have a lot of fun with it. I'm a chef by trade. I worked in Four Seasons in Boston, the Harbor Club in Boston, and opened up Bia about nine years ago. And since then, kind of polished off my entrepreneurial kind of restaurant operating skills, but I kind of miss the kitchen, and I want to get back to cooking, so I think this restaurant is being small enough that we can really focus on the food and make it somewhere kind of fun.
Thank you. Anything else?
Erica's done a little package along...
We said, we got a package here. It was, thank you for sending it over. Just to recap for everybody, what the package says, it shows that their involvement in the community, both in Cohasset and in Norwell, as well as in Situate, they've cooperated with the Norwell Police Department on a program to give drivers more incentive to stay sober. It has also a letter from the Cohasset Police and, I believe, the Norwell Police, speaking through their, there was no negative activity at the Bia Bistro in the years that you owned it. Thank you very much for sending that on to us.
I just, I noticed one thing in the package. I'm sure maybe other restaurants do it, but it did jump out to me, that you offer free non-alcoholic drinks to people that are designated drivers.
Yes, we do.
I think that's a wonderful idea. I just wanted to say that I've gone to your facility in Norwell and it's well-run. I wish you the best of luck. The only question was a change in hours. My one sentence is, if there aren't any abuddhas that are right nearby, I would probably, you know, I might be jumping ahead a little bit, but I really don't have a problem with that. And finally, I'd like to just thank Aaron for a great job he's done. Like you said, a lot of people have enjoyed it. Thank you, Aaron. Good luck.
That's all. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Just a couple, how many seats are you going to have there?
I think we got, we're 59 is what we have right now.
59 seats. And that includes the bar?
That includes the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, and the live entertainment?
Live entertainment? Aaron has a license right now. That's something we haven't really touched on yet. We do a lot of live entertainment at Tinkers, not so much in Bia. We would like the availability to be able to do kind of like a Sunday morning, kind of a brunch, or maybe an acoustic thing as well, but not bands.
So you're coming, that's not tonight, though. Tonight's just the liquor license.
Tonight's just liquor license, correct.
And, you know, obviously, we're very cautious of liquor license, tip-certified.
Absolutely.
Everybody, everybody in the front of the house actually is required to have it. Upon hire, the individual has to prove within 30 days that he or she maintains tip certification. We offer tip certification every year and a half, so it's good for two years. We offer a class to the entire staff. They can either take it with us or take it online. This year, on top of all of the servers and bartenders re-upping their tip certification, we also had two food runners and two hosts take part. Even though they're not serving alcohol, they know that it's important that we all share the same level of education. They know how we feel about responsible alcohol service, and they're very on board with our philosophy, so they know.
Just so you're aware, if there's violations, we take it very seriously. We've got guidelines that we follow that are very, you know, that will be penalized severely if there's violation.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we appreciate that, and Sean brought up a great point. That's, actually, that's a first. I've heard of that, so I think that's a great idea with the...
There's something that we've been doing, and Erica's been working with the Norwell Police Department for quite a while, and they kind of brought it to our attention. Maybe two years ago, they were like, why don't you guys, you know, can we put this in? And we said, we've been doing this for years, so between Erica and them, they've been working together in that, and it's been working out great.
Now, several bars actually in Norwell are embracing that policy, so I think it's something that, obviously, it's a policy that makes sense, so it's a no-brainer, but I think just sort of bringing it to light, putting it on the Norwell PD website has definitely put the word out there, and, you know, people have been on board, which is obviously what we want to happen. A policy like that should snowball.
And we've done other things, too, as you see, like this New Year's Eve, for instance, we had a, because we've got the restaurant in Cohasset, and we've got the restaurant in Norwell, and, you know, it's not just out of greed, but out of people's safety, we arranged for people that came to Bia to eat. We hired a limousine or a bus to bring the Tinker Sun, so they could have dancing and more fun. And then the bus actually dropped them off at their houses on the way back, so got them a safe ride home, which went over really well, and that's something we're definitely going to continue with.
Absolutely.
Because it kind of took the whole driving aspect out of it, because people want to have fun on New Year's Eve, but we want to make sure they get home safely.
And Sean, you mentioned the hours. What, so the hours are, it's going to be 10 to 1? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, right, except for Sundays, I think, which is 11. I think it's 11 in Situate, but the rest of the week, 10. Aaron goes from 10 to 10 right now.
10 to 11, I think.
10 to 11.
10 to 11 is what Aaron has right now.
10 to 11. But, you know, he opens for breakfast a lot more than us. I think our goal is to open for breakfast maybe just on the weekends, so I think that would limit our hours a little bit too much if we were to close at 11 o'clock at night.
What, I don't, does anyone else have a 1 o'clock license?
Yes, quite a few people.
Do they?
Yeah. Who know more, Barker Tavern in Situate.
Riva or...
And Situate Harbor.
Yeah, we haven't done, most of the ones recently have been, haven't gone that late.
Well, it's out the door by 1 o'clock. It's 12:30 last call, it's kind of, you know.
From the floor?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Schmidt. I live at 33 Egypt Beach Road here in Situate, 25, 30 years or so. And I'm in the restaurant business, have been for most of my life, and I've been working with these guys for, I think, about 10 years or so. And I'm a big proponent of their operation and the hearty endorsement of them coming into town. I think it would be a big asset for Situate. I admire the way that they run their businesses, and I just wanted to give you my two cents for it. Thank you.
Bill, thank you, Bill. Further discussion from the floor? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
Through the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the transfer of a common vic, all kinds of alcoholic beverage license held by 95 Front Street LLC doing business as Fins to Green-Eyed Lady Inc. doing business as Galley, for the premises located at 95 Front Street, Situate, described as a 2,000-square-foot, one-floor restaurant consisting of a dining room, bar area, kitchen, waitstaff station, one front entry and egress, one rear egress, and office area on the second floor.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous? Good luck.
We've got to do the change in hours now.
Change in hours, you're going to do that one? Okay, yep. Motion and change of hours?
The Board of Selectmen vote to grant the request for a change in hours by Green-Eyed Lady Inc. doing business as Galley from the current 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday, to 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday, and Sundays, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Motion's been made?
Just one, on Sundays till 1:00 a.m.? Is that...
Well, it's Monday morning at 1:00 a.m.
Monday morning, right, right, right. No, that's Monday night, that's Monday morning.
The 1:00 a.m. is always your following day.
Right, I know. Do we want to have it on Sundays till 1?
What do the others, I think the others all have it till 1.
Yeah, just have that.
They do have it?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous?
Finally, the common vic license. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a common vic license to Green-Eyed Lady Inc. doing business as Galley, 95 Front Street.
Second?
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's unanimous. Now, congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, going back to the original agenda. Walk-in period, any walk-ins? Anyone here to walk in? Walk-in period, seeing none, moving on. A change order, discussion and vote, change order, Masquashka Pond Sewer Extension Project. Kevin, thank you.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Why don't we ask, we don't want to... Kim, were we supposed to read the legal notice? Will it be all right if we didn't do that?
Yes, I think it is all right.
Think so?
Actually, what, actually...
Want me to do it real quick?
Yeah, if you would mind. Yeah, thank you, sorry about that.
Just read the legal notice for the previous article. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 19, 2013, at about 7:10 p.m. in the Selectmen's Chambers, Town Hall 600, Chief Justice fishing highway, Situate, Mass., to consider the application for the transfer of a common vicular all kinds license, alcoholic beverage license, held by 95 Front Street LLC, DBA Fins, to Green-Eyed Lady Inc., DBA Galley, for the premises located at 95 Front Street, Situate, described as a 2,000-square-foot, one-floor restaurant containing a dining room, bar area, kitchen, waitstaff room, one front entry, egress, one rear egress, and an office area on the second floor.
Thank you, thank you, Tony.
Yes.
Okay. The Squashka Pond Sewer change order. Kevin?
We bring before you two change orders for the Masquashka Pond project. I'll start off with the first one. The first one is a unit cost overrun that's run on the project for the sewer portion of the project, and I've included on the third sheet of the packet the different items that overran and caused the overrun, and the value of that change order is $57,000. A lot of that work is, there were different alignments in the actual field that were made. There were additional homes that were added, so there were additional services put on. We ran into some areas where there was some unforeseen drainage problems, and we repaired them, and some different issues. It's outlined in this third page about the 18 and 19 items.
Kevin, just, thank you. You know, we've had this discussion before, and I know some things are unforeseen in the change orders, but I think the board has tried to make it clear, you know, that it's not something that the board is really thrilled about doing. Some of the change orders were done in the past, probably have been for items that the contractor should have been aware of, should have made himself aware of it before he bid on the contract. Didn't. Didn't do that due diligence, and as a result, the town ended up paying down the road.
On this, on this particular item, John, I'm not meaning to cut you off. This is, for example, on Hadley Road, the golf course decided that they had an easement, and they wanted to bring a sewer tie-in to that section. So we might have had to have added a manhole, we might have had to add additional pipe for additional residents or homes that wanted to tie into the system. Sometimes there might be an abandoned lot, and the owner says, you know, now I have a buildable lot, the sewer's going by, I want to add my sewer service, so we might have to add some different work to that.
I think, I don't think the board has a problem with change orders. They're initiated because of the town's asking for them. Put a stub in, put a sewer, you know, I don't think, if we asked for it, certainly we, if we didn't ask for it in the RFP, then of course...
Yep, and that's what this one basically is, things that we needed and updates that we needed.
Go ahead, next.
Are you saying that we may have gotten revenue outside of this to cover this $57,000? So if we hook somebody up at their house, they paid a betterment for it?
That'd be part of the betterment. Yes.
So there are situations where this 57 is offset by a betterment?
To a point, yes. It's all determined in the betterments. If you look on the third page of that particular one...
Are you referring to this list?
Yes.
Okay.
That gives an outline of where the units are for the additional costs of that. And everything was paid per unit price of the contract, what was bid and everything to that.
Right.
To that effect, so. For example, there were seven extra manholes put in. Some of the people in their houses changed the location where they wanted the pipes to come out of their house, and so it added extra footage for the lateral services.
But who paid for that? Like, if someone says, I don't want it here, I want it there, who pays for that extra $1,000?
If there's additional footage or anything to that, it's not on private property, it's on the public portion of the property.
But we pay for it.
So we would pay for it?
We pay for it, no.
In the betterment.
The people in the Squashka Pond pay for it.
So the people...
The people who requested it wind up paying for it. You could look at it that way.
They pay the whole thing, right?
They pay the whole thing, yes.
Right, right.
So what you're saying is, not everyone gets the same betterment?
No, everybody does get the same betterment.
But if someone has additional work done, more pipe, and someone doesn't, we both pay the same betterment?
Correct.
Even though I had...
Correct, but it's...
They're splitting hairs there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's small in the total of the whole cost of the project.
I guess this is being, I was confused. So the project itself is $57,000 or more expensive, but it's not costing the town anything more.
No, it's not costing the town anything.
This is all the betterment project.
Correct, correct.
And it's still underneath the cost of the total project.
Right.
Correct. So...
I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, it's just, for example, if somebody want, like, we ran into a couple locations where the drainage, and I know when we came up in front of the board the first time, there were concerns about some of the drainage. In this contract, we allowed some money for if we ran into a drainage pipe that was a conflict or in bad condition, that it would be replaced. And some of that work happened in that value also as part of the unit prices, so. And that sheet breaks it down on where, and, you know, some of the other costs were, we overran on calcium chloride. We put a lot of calcium chloride down on the roads to keep the dust down from everybody while they're doing the construction work. Just one example.
Motion?
No. One second.
Question?
Yeah. It really has to do with this one and the next one, but I just want to mention it here. I guess the, you know, Al just raised a good point. I was looking at this this afternoon, and I got the impression that Tony said it, yeah, it's not costing the town, it's costing the people in the Squashka Pond, just like Greenbush and the Cliffs cost, you know, that cost was just on those people. But I think we just have to keep in mind, it's almost like an open checkbook. Well, you know, we need to be conscientious of the fact of how much money these residents are going to spend, okay? This is the third change order. And I don't want to give the impression to these people, mine it, or the next group, that someone's not watching. And, you know, I guess you touched on it. I remember Rick Agnew used to have bid calculations, and they were per unit price, and it has to do with a little bit more of the second one, how your quantities of material, you know, that had to be transported back and forth, went from 2,000 cubic yards to 6,000 cubic yards. And I'd like to see, or I'd like to feel comfortable that you know that there's a unit price for each cubic yard. And probably more importantly, do we have a engineer on site during this project?
Yes, yes.
Was this brought to your attention before today? Because if there's an engineer on site, I'd like to, I'd really like to know that he sees this happening as it happens. And we're not, you know, it's, the next one's $175,000, that's a lot of money. I just don't want, you know, and this contractor had a very good reputation, but I don't want them to think they can come back in a Situate, be low bidder, and make it up on extras. You know, that's, you know, I spent quite a bit of time looking at these two articles, and that's kind of the impression that I got. So my biggest concern is that there is a resident engineer on site that fills out a daily log, you know, and then, really like to look at the RFP. Like I said, Rick Agnew used to, I remember a long time ago, he would have, he would have it broken down from mobilization, demobilization, all your materials per unit price, okay? So if some material, just like manhole covers, per lineal foot, for manhole covers. So if you go over, that, they're going to go over per foot, per yard, per ton.
Sean, that's exactly what we have.
All right. I just haven't seen that.
No, well, I can show you the contract.
No, no, as long as it's there, all right.
We did have a resident engineer on here full-time watching the whole project.
Good.
It was documented as it went. If somebody came in for a betterment or wanted to add a lot, we made note of it, and we took into consideration. And we're trying to be proactive. Before the contract closes out, we're bringing our final numbers in once we've got our total quantities put together, so that we can present them before you. And the project's been watched, and it's all been unit prices. All this work was done per unit prices.
Okay. Why would they try to get almost twice as much?
We can discuss, I'll discuss that in the next issue. I was going to just take the two separate.
All right, good, all right.
Motion?
Motion on the first one?
Please.
And just one other thing that it says here, and I was going to ask this, I saw it here, that that $57,000 is a 1.7% increase, change order of 1.7%. So it's, percentage-wise, it's not huge, but money-wise, it is. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the change order for contract overruns from a Squashcap Pond sewer contract 10-SS-22 in the amount of $57,000 to Albany's Brothers, Inc. This change order shall be funded by Article 4C dot 6 dot 4 from the 2009 town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and second in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Kevin, on this, next time when we get one of these, if there's, if there's two or three of these that are the significant amount of the money, if you could put over here, you know, that the seven manhole covers were $15,000.
Those are actual full manholes, you know, 10 feet manhole, yeah, okay.
You know, if that was a lot of it and this gravity thing was only $50.
I could break that down without a problem.
Just a little bit.
I tried to keep it simple. And I do want to point out one thing. A lot of the change orders that we did have, that we've come before the board prior, have been water-related. And they were all picked up by the water department. The residents were not paying for the water changes. That all came through the water rates and it was absorbed by the water department. So just to classify that, if they had a gate that broke or something to that effect that we had to fix under that contract, it was all done with water funds.
Thank you.
The next change order is a little more challenging, I'll say. And I will explain it this way. The contractor, and I hope everybody had a chance to read it. The contractor had submitted a claim when the project was about 85% to 90% done fairly recently, asking for, they were looking for $300,000. They documented that they believe they have a change of conditions out on the site, that there's a lot more clay than what's shown in the borings. In the engineering phase of the project, the town spent about $40,000 in subsurface control. We did a boring about every 300 feet and there's a drawing that shows where all the borings are. There was attached into the package, it's at the very back of the package. And it gives a summary of what is found in those borings and what we have. The town has denied that change order repeatedly to the contractor. We've told the contractor, no, we do not accept the change, we don't agree with it. There was also an underrun of rock, which is in our favor. We put the whole package together, we told the contractor that we would not accept that change. The contractor said, if need be, we'll have to go to court on this issue. We said, okay, we're ready to go to court. We then in turn took our whole package before we did that and sent it over to town council and had them review everything prior to us doing that because we didn't want to go in blind and go directly down the legal action. Town council came back to us and I included the memo in that package and said, with a change of conditions, it becomes awful hard to prove with the amount of clay. It can go back and forth depending on who you have for a geotechnical engineer and what type of silt was there. So they said it could be a fight. The contractor was looking for $300,000 and I believe he said, Jim Toomey said, we could spend $50,000, $60,000 easily fighting the battle. I spoke with the contractor and tried to negotiate a lump sum to see where they would fall. And we came up to an agreement of $175,000 pending the selectmen's approval. So what I'm doing here is I've kind of put the package together and I'm presenting it to the board and looking for direction on how we'd like to proceed. We could tell the contractor, no, or we could probably settle for the 175.
I think we have an opinion from Jim in here somewhere, Jim Toomey, legal counsel, that it's almost a 50-50 shot if we went to court, 50...
60-40, yeah.
50-40, 60-40, whether we prevail or not. So it's, I don't know.
Kevin, that's 60-40, we'd lose.
We'd lose, yeah.
It says 60 to 65%.
To a contractor, it can't be a big surprise that the soil is clay. Because if it was gravel, it wouldn't be on our priority list and we wouldn't be doing sewers in that area. So it's, you know, and I wonder, you know, how much of this liability falls on Weston and Sampson? I mean, much like the asphalt that was thicker than was supposed to be. You know, I mean, has Jim given us any indication on if they hold some of this liability?
Weston and Sampson, and I agree with you, I said the same thing. And that's why we denied this right off the bat. And Weston and Sampson feels comfortable, they say, well, we think we're right, but of course they're going to say they're right. And they've done their due diligence because we've done soil samples every 300 feet.
Right.
The issue becomes, in the beginning of the project, we probably could have spent a lot more money, say $40,000 or $50,000, in having every sample that we took analyzed for the clay content. And we could avoid that maybe. We didn't think it would be an issue or prudent to really go down that means because we really didn't want to drive up the costs. We didn't think it would be an issue because it does show silt and clay. And we denied the, we denied it with the contractor, but you know, we did the reality check and sent all the information over to Toomey. He had it for about a month, town council, and they came back with those results. So is there some liability on Weston Sampson? We could talk to Toomey about that.
Right, right. The important thing I think we have to keep in mind, that Al hit the nail, you know, said it right in the beginning, that this, including these change orders, still came under our initial estimates?
We're still under the estimate and we're probably around $20,000 for a betterment, same as where we were before. We hit it in a good bidding climate and everything else. And it's a big job.
Right, right.
Put one to the other betterment.
Right, I realize that. And we have a different contractor that seemed to move right along. I heard nothing but great things about this contractor, you know, how friendly they were to the butters and so forth. It's a, I'd like to think we're learning a little bit from our, you know, from our first phases, that maybe the next phase or two, we don't, I'm not called of mistakes, but we learn from these things. So we can, you know, and maybe lower, instead of 18,000, the next group pays 16,000, I don't know. This area, I, what, a little bit I know, knew it was going to be a challenge with the, you know, water table so high.
We, you know, with all the rock outcropping, Sean, we expected to hit a lot more rock.
Right.
And we underran the rock. I mean, we figured it'd be half-rock digging out there and it wasn't.
Right.
So we saved money on that and they're still...
We save, yeah, we save, it kind of balances because we save money on rock, too.
But we're still leaning 175 grand more.
That's what the contractor is claiming.
What they want, if I'm not mistaken, Tony, what they want to do is excavate rock, bring it to a crusher, process it, put it back in the trench. They didn't get enough of that material. They got clay, silt, that wasn't good to go back in. They had to transport that out and bring processed material in.
And then the issue is, you could crush that rock and they have a unit price to crush that rock, transport it, and then bring it back as stone. And they didn't get paid the unit price either. See, so they weren't paid for taking the stone. So they're also claiming, they could claim that they lost profit on that. And, you know, we're still within the...
But even with the lost expense to crush the rock, we still need $175,000 extra money to hit this change order.
Well, the contractor's claiming 300,000 actually. And I negotiated down with them to 175. And we denied it, we probably denied it four or five times before we got there. And, you know, before we went, before it was all said and done, I mean, we did talk to Jim Toomey about it and just, we wanted legal counsel opinion on it. And you have his opinion there. And that's when we figured we'd come to you and talk to you about it.
Yeah, my only comment would be, I agree with Sean, you know, Weston and Sampson had the responsibility, and that's their job, to analyze everything and analyze the soil. You know, obviously, they didn't analyze it right. Someone didn't, well, they didn't analyze it right. So why do we take the hit when our engineering firm that we paid good money, we've been paying good money to for 20 years?
Yep.
Very good money. Why do we take the hit when it appears that there are an error? This is my only point, mainly.
Al, do we run into, or Kevin, do we run into these with Greenbush and the cliffs? I don't recall voting overruns. And Weston Sampson, if I'm not mistaken, they were the engineers.
Weston Sampson was the engineering firm for those other cliffs.
So it's not like they knew it was a situat.
No doubt.
I had a comfort level with Steve and some of the people.
They're good from, this area that we're in is, is right at the edge of the change in the geology, you know, from, you think about cohesities, all ledge, and you can't even get water out of the ground. And then we are a huge clay deposit right in that location. And then you go further south and we're a big sand deposit.
Right.
And so in this particular area, the clay was, when they got into it, was more like modeling clay. They dug a pit 35 feet deep next to the Squashcap Pond, thinking they would have to pump all the water out of it. No water came into the pit.
Wow.
35-foot hole.
Wow.
No water came in and it was more than, no more than 100 feet from the Squashcap Pond. So well below the bottom of the pond, but it was just, it was like bentonite, it was just such clay.
So they knew it was clay?
Yep.
Well, that was a contractor that ran into that, that that was clay.
And the thing is that what happened is there's so much that they could, that they took out of the ground, they couldn't put back in. That's their claim, okay? We've denied it since November, early November, late October. We asked the engineering firm to go back and look at it several different times. They denied it, we've denied it. Now we're really just faced with, do we want to go to court over it? Because we've told them that we, up until, up until Mr. Toomey weighed in, we said that we're just denying it, you know, taking it to court. But now the advice is that when you add the legal costs, we might be in one position.
Do you know where I'm coming from though, Al? You know, low bid and then they come into town and then they make it up on extras. And that just, you know, you know...
Yep. They can eat some items, so, you know, that's...
And Sean, they fought tooth and nail for anything that was an extra. The majority of the extras, we initiated. I shouldn't say initiate, I mean, we had water problems that were out there. A lot of them were water problems that we had with the old pipes that we had going there. And the asphalt wasn't unforeseen condition, we didn't realize that. And that was picked up, it wasn't picked up by Weston and Sampson. Weston Sampson's given us a credit for the engineering that would be involved that was equivalent to the profit on that. Because, and it's the same as this issue here. If they had identified it as being a complete clay material, as Al just described, your cost might have gone up on how they were going to deal with some of that material.
Oh, sure, yeah, right.
So I've included, in the packet that I gave you, was a sample of what the boring log says. And the boring log says silt and clay. It's just to the extent of that clay, of how bad the clay was, is what they're claiming.
And it's incumbent upon the contractor also to look at the borings and see what's there and make decisions. And they did, made some decisions around how much they would charge for gravel, how much they'd charge for unsuitable materials. And maybe they did it in such a way that got them awarded the contract.
But that should have been in the unit price in the RFP, right? That's...
It's in the unit price of the bidding package. And there was a price for unsuitable material.
Right.
They've gone well above that and beyond that. And what they're saying is that material they did take out, they tried processing and they couldn't process it and bring it back in the road without it moving or without settling all over the place. And to give the contractor, they do, they did bring in a lot of gravel and they didn't try to put all the old material out there where we had issues where the road was settling all over the place.
I have a problem, I have a problem with the argument that, well, it's going to cost us legal fees and we might lose the case anyway, and it's going to cost us money for that, so let's sell. I think that's the reason our car insurance rates are astronomical and our homeowners' policies are astronomical, because we're too, insurance, you know, companies are too quick to sell. And I don't want to be like an insurance company and just say, well, it's going to cost us some money to go to court, so let's settle and give them $175,000.
Well, that's why I just presented the case to you and let you guys go.
You know, if, once we start weighing legal costs into our decisions, whether we're going to fight for principle or not, I think we're in trouble. And I'm not saying, I don't care, we'll vote for it, if you people want it to vote for it, I'll vote for it. But I'm just saying, I think that sometimes we are too quick as a board and as a town to say, well, legal costs are going to cost us, so let's sell.
I just looked at it when I did my calc in the head and my suggestion is I multiplied the 60% by the 300 or potential 360, and that's my figure that I came up with.
So I just, I...
It's not so much the legal costs, it's the likelihood of winning.
Yeah. You know, we've gone to court, we've gone to court with the likelihood of winning a lot less of that, so. But I, I don't care.
So do both of you guys support the settlement?
I do, I'm not, you know, I...
Would you if you lived there?
If the material was there, you know, the engineer says, yeah, the material was, it's not that Albany's is...
If the sheet had come back accurately, then everyone would have bid more.
Yeah, if, if they had known what was there, the bid would have been higher to start with. And we'd still be paying the money.
Right.
Okay? So it's not like there wasn't clay there and they say it is, or that there was gravel there that they could have used and they didn't. It was, it was there, they didn't put it in their bid, and now they are asking for it. And that's why we said, well, tough bananas for so long. And now we're getting advice saying, you probably can't win that one.
Right.
And it's not as though they did something wrong in the project or they're trying to tell us that something was there that wasn't there. It was there and it's a cost of construction. I guess at one point during the discussions, they said, well, that's construction, there's a lot of unknowns underground.
But that's why we get engineering firms to tell us what's underran.
Right.
Yeah, but anyway.
I mean, I'll vote in favor of it only because town council says we're likely to lose if we don't, if I can find the motion.
Just a couple of things. One is, part of the town, part of this is the town's responsibility and the initial spec to the engineer about how many soil borings needed to be done. In hindsight, we could have probably asked for more in that area, which led, and we, I sat in on the meeting with the engineering company because I was very upset about all the issues that you raised, and that's why we got a substantial credit back from them. But part of the reason was that when we originally did the scope of services for the engineering services, it only had a certain quantified number of test samples that in hindsight, maybe we should have done more because that was a new area of town. The most distressing thing is, is though the case law does not support towns going to court on these matters. Because what the case law says is, it doesn't matter because you would have done it anyway and you're still getting the benefit of it having been done. And it's not, and so this work was material to the project being completed and therefore any claim for additional costs is going to be supported by the contractor because the work has to be done anyway. So that's the unfortunate thing about this. So is there lots of people to share what happened and why this is before you? Yes. Have we, do we learn from each thing and do it better next time, including things in the harbor and stuff like that? Yes, we do. We're requiring much more engineering services and oversight on our construction projects now. You saw that last week when Mark was here about the proposed Harbor Walk Park. So, you know, it is what it is unfortunately in this case. And if I thought it was worth litigating, I would be here recommending that to you. But I have been through this before in another community and it did not work in our favor.
Okay.
Motion?
Motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the change order for unsuitable materials from a Squashcap Pond sewer contract 10-SS-22 in the amount of $175,000 to Albany's Brothers, Inc. This change order shall be funded by Article 4C dot 6 dot 4 from the 2009 town meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second and further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Kevin, one quick question.
Yes.
The Parade Route, what's the street that goes up by the cemetery?
Common.
Stock Common.
Yes.
Is that going to be paved over?
That's scheduled to be paved. It was held up because, remember, we were having all the water problems there, the brown water, we traced it as a brown water issue. What we did is we replaced one of the sidelines that go off the edge there and ran new services over. And we also opened that line up and we ran the plug through it. And then we did the pressure washing through that line and cleaned that line. We had to go back and do it a second time. And the problem is, by the time we did it the second time and finished it, the asphalt pavement plant started shutting down. So we weren't able to get back in there and pave it. But it's on the list to get paved right off the bat. It's been a tough winter, that road. I mean, we, you know, I'm sure the plow drivers will tell you the same thing. Hopefully, we assign a contractor to it and get it taken care of, but...
So what do you think, the spring?
Yeah, no doubt. First, that's first on our list, once we get the contractor back in.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Moving along.
Special permit?
There was no, special permit, situated antique, classic boat show. Mark, how are you?
Fine, thank you, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Can you do this for that, Rick? Rick's not here, is that all right? Your own. We'll try, I'll try to fill in.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, I'm the chairman. Mark Patterson, City Power Master. I'm here tonight to propose a special permit for a boat show that we want to hold in harbor this summer. It's sort of going to take off on a touch of truck shows that have become very popular lately, and the idea is to sort of try to bring some folks down to the water's edge and enjoy some of the fantastic boats that we have in harbor, and some of our, some other boats that are going to be visiting Situate. So, basically, what we want to do is have some boats in different areas of the harbor. In Cole Parkway, down at the Fisherman's Dock, there'll be a commercial boat there, and a redone Mossing Dory. At Cole Parkway, we'll have seven or eight boats on display there. The Maritime Center will be open, and there'll be maritime displays going on over there, as well as, we hope to have the historical buildings on the park open for the day. And also, we've invited a NOAA to include their research vessel, Yawk, and one of, so people will be able to walk around the harbor and enjoy these different boats at different locations, or they can enjoy a narrated boat tour to go around the harbor and visit them that way. So we have, we do have a launch on board who's going to be there, dedicated to the show all day long. So we think it's a great opportunity for families to come down, see a lot of neat boats and enjoy the harbor. It is going to be on July the 6th this year, from 10 o'clock in the morning until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. We talked a lot about the date, and we decided on this one for a number of reasons, mainly because there are other boat shows in New England, a lot of them take place earlier in the season. Some of the boats that we want to highlight during our show aren't going to be ready during May or June, so we're going a little bit later. We did want to make sure that it wasn't going to interfere with anything, so we brought it to the merchants group in the harbor, and we do have a letter of support from the harbor merchants. They're actually excited about it, they're excited about the added foot traffic and probably bringing some more business down the area.
I commend you for moving forward on things like this, and I think this is a perfect example of why Situate Harbor has the reputation that it has. Not only are we just a harbor where someone can put their boat for two or three months, but through your efforts, we were able to do things like this that make us stand out from other harbors, so thank you.
Thank you.
Rain date, in case it rains?
July the 13th.
Nice, great.
So this is Saturday?
Yes.
And Rick just texted me, and he said he wants to give his support for the event.
Motion?
Yep. Will the Board's Selectmen vote to grant a special permit for the Situate Antique and Classic Boat Show on Saturday, July 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in Situate Harbor and on the bandstand area of Cole Parkway, in accordance with all conditions set by town administrator and town departments?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Did five?
We did five, moving to six.
Solar Array?
Discussion, the solar array, Al.
Thank you. We discussed this topic briefly last week. The solar array project is moving forward. There are some amendments to the agreement that will ensure that the project moves forward. You're signing on these amendments and the easements associated with constructing it. The signatures will be held by our attorney until the deposit of $109,500 is cleared into Situate Bank account.
It's funny, last time I mentioned, are there any communities that are having a problem with this? And then in that Sunday's Globe, was it West Bridgewater, did you see it?
It was Canton.
Was it Canton?
Canton.
Where someone was putting in-
I think it was Canton.
I think it was Bridgewater, but they were having complaints with the solar array that was going up there. I think it was mostly because of the residential area.
I think they were anticipating it, anticipating complaints. I mean, it wasn't there yet.
Right, but they were thinking, there were health concerns, and I mean, I think they were worried more about it leaking into the water supply, which we don't have to worry about up on the old landfill, but, you know, anything we can, you know, alleviate from, from these, you know, great projects would be-
From our standpoint, right now, the DEP is much more, I don't want to say more stringent than we are, but the DEP had to study and then issue a change of use for the landfill for this to be put on there. So, the state is very much encouraging the use of land, closed landfills for solar arrays. It's one of Governor Patrick's and Secretary Sullivan's main thrusts, and the DEP has had to vet that this is a, that this is the right kind of project and that there's no pollution situations. There were a number of other ones that I passed on to you, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to any of them, but-
I haven't talked to them, but I've looked them up online. Yeah, so, you know, I just thought-
This will be up elevated, too, so that it won't be, there is one in Amherst, which is down lower. Apparently, someone put a housing development surrounding a closed landfill.
The closest houses, well, it'd be down on the backside, right?
Yes, right, it'll be-
So it's not really a residential area.
No chance of reflections or anything like that?
No, no, no. These are designed not to reflect because anything reflected is lost light.
And there's no leaking in any water supply, no hazardous material, that sort of stuff?
No, and that article referred to hazardous waste, it's a little bit like other complaints on other things, but hazard, there's no hazardous waste, this is silicone, you know, which is, that's used for a number of things.
I, you know, I've had conversations with Al over the past year about this project, and I'm going to vote for this extension tonight. However, I, you know, it's well-known, I think, it's becoming better known in the, in the field of solar energy, that it's not becoming economically feasible for a lot of these projects, a lot of these developers to go forward. And the reason that we're delaying this, or they're asking for delay, is that they're having problems making the numbers work, and they're not alone. I mean, everyone in this field is having this problem. As I say, I will vote for it, I, I, because I don't think we have anything to lose. It's not a case of we're, we're putting up money and we're going to lose anything if they don't end up building it. As a matter of fact, if they don't, Al's been negotiating with them to, as he said last week, to put in over $100,000 that we will start collecting on May 31st, I think, at a rate of $100 a day. So if they don't do the project, we're $109,000 to the good. And for that reason, I'll, I'll, I'll vote for it because I like the project, but I just throw that warning out there that they are having problems.
Yeah, as you say, the, when we went out for proposals, we received 11 proposals back. The committee, the Energy Committee, worked hardest on trying to understand whether or not the proposers were legitimate proposers that could, in fact, finance the projects because we knew that they were difficult to finance, solar costs about four times what wind costs. And a number of the, I've checked, a number of the other near, nearly picked proposers have since gone way away. They're no longer in the solar business, or they folded, and some of the projects they proposed that they had in hand never materialized. So I give a lot of credit to Brightfields for hanging in there to make this one work, and the delays we've seen thus far have been trying to make the numbers work and get the finances lined up. We're now at a very good place where they are totally committed to this because of the money they have invested, and they, in the contracts that we have with them, they have to put up not only the $109,000 of cash for us to use for liquidated damages, $300 a day after June 15th, they also have to show that they've got $2 million worth of items on or on firm, unchangeable orders, and that they have signed a contract and are under construction in May. So we will see, we will see this project go forward. I'm totally convinced at this point.
Motion?
Will the Board's Selectmen vote to accept the amendments to the lease and power purchase agreements with Situate Solar LLC and authorize the requested easements?
Second.
Our motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, you may, thank you, Al.
Thank you.
With the Board's permission, the next item is the Gates School presentation.
However, the item following that is a vote on the cell tower bids, and I see some people here for the cell towers, so rather than keep them here till maybe much later, I would just suggest we move that ahead of the presentation for Gates and get that vote over with. So, kind of a simple matter-of-fact vote, so. Tricia, would you explain what we're doing, just?
Sure. Per the Board's direction last November, an RFP was issued for a cell tower on the east, southeast corner of Wampatuck. This is the same RFP that was issued two years ago in the same location, and the selected bidder withdrew in the 11th hour. The bids this time around were opened on March 15th. We received two bids that met the requirements for the bid, AT&amp;T and Verizon. Verizon, as you can see from the material that I gave you, was the high bidder based on the minimum requirement set by the town for a return of $504,000 over the first 10 years of the contract. The second 10 would have been at the option of the town, and those are before the Board this evening for either to award or reject, and if it's in the best interest of the town to do so.
And last week, we voted not to support the cell tower at Wampatuck.
What you voted was, part and parcel of this RFP is that town-owned, town land that is to be leased requires town meeting approval.
And we voted no.
So even if you had voted to award these bids prior, it would still have gone to a town meeting vote to approve the lease, and vice versa, if it had gone to town meeting and the lease was denied, then the bids therefore would be moot as well. And the Board, in anticipation of that warrant article, on a 2-2 vote last week, which means the motion failed to put it on the warrant.
So it's not doing the warrant, so that makes the-
We have to reject the bids, is that-
The bid, not void or mute, I guess, so we reject the bid.
Short of another town meeting to put it on, that is correct.
It could go on another town meeting, but as of right now, it's not going forward to town meeting.
That is correct. It's not, it's not on the warrant.
So we should reject these bids.
If that's the Board's pleasure. The two are not mutually exclusive.
Okay, all right.
So we could, we could accept them, but they would have to go to another town meeting to pass.
Still has to go to a town meeting because the lease is subject to town meeting approval.
How long can they hold these, how long are these bids good for?
I think this is 120 days.
So we would have to have another town meeting, and so that's not likely.
That's correct.
Within four months. So that's probably not likely. That's April, April, May, June, July.
No, well, it hasn't planned, it's also before the House.
Well, if, if we had put it on and it had passed, then you'd be all set to go.
Right.
And we really put it before the town to make the decision. What ended up happening is-
But even if you had awarded the bid tonight, and then it was still on the warrant for town meeting, and town meeting voted the lease down, then you still have no tower.
So what happened was, you know, a group of people came in and they vocalized, and the Board voted not to put it on.
And by tonight, we're just letting the public know what was potentially there for income. That's really all.
No, you have a formal bid, and you are obligated to accept or reject those bids because you legally follow the law.
By accepting it, we'd have to have a special town meeting within 120 days or before these-
Or you would ask the contractor to hold the bid firm.
Right, right.
Well, you two voted against it, I voted for it, so I don't think-
Well, you have to, you want a formal motion, move to reject the bid by Verizon.
Because it's in the best interest of the town to do so, I would say. You, when you issue a bid, you always reserve the right to reject a bid.
Move to reject the bid from Verizon for the best interest of the town.
And I will second that as chairman due to the fact that there's only three of us here tonight, so I will second Sean's motion, and I will ask for discussion.
I mean, the only thing that I'll say, oh, I'll say is, you know, it's, I mean, it's a lot of money, it's a half a million dollars, and it's, it's going to go down the street. So the private landowner who leases this to Verizon, whoever, is going to make possibly $40,000 a year to have the cell tower right down the street.
What does that mean? It's going down the street to a-
Well, AT&amp;T, per federal law, can put cell towers where they need to have coverage, and they came to the town first and said, do you want to put it on town land, where they already had somebody with a piece of private property that was going to put it on their land? And the town, we discussed at one point, that we would, we would rather receive the income than not receive the income and have it be right down the street. The problem was, the only property that they liked was on the school, which is troubling to all of us, but, you know, there is one right here next to this school, but, but we decided not to put on the warrant and not accept it, and, you know, just so we're all on the same page. There was an email that Robbins Glazier sent us that talked about alternative sources of cellular service, and we'd love for them to do that, but unfortunately, that's out of our control, you know, we can't mandate it, and it'd be great if they came through and did stuff on telephone poles, but that's not where they're headed, so.
I'm going to go down in order, so, the woman, how about the woman right next to this gentleman? Yep, yep.
Nancy Fay, 423 Road. There are alternative systems, Cohasset and Weston Wellesley, Santa Monica, different coastlines have the DAS system in place, distributed antenna system. And this system will go along the different telephone poles, whether the National Grid owns them or whoever owns them. It goes along the telephone poles, there's one pole that will have a nine-foot cylinder on top of it, so it just extends the pole, and then there are other small transmitter units that are put on various poles along the way. So you do not have the intrusion of a cell tower, you do not have, because AT&amp;T, when they were here last time, what AT&amp;T said was that once they get this first cell tower up, they said, we're going to the harbor next, and then we're going to Humrock. So you start the precedent of having this cell tower as close as you're having it to the ocean with, with the visibility of it, of what it's going to be, and you're going to start, that they're going to be able to go right down the harbor, go right down Humrock, and keep going down the coast because there's nothing so close along the coastline. But this DAS system is in place in many, many different places. Cohasset 2007, Hall has it, James Tamar Island, Martha's Vineyard.
I think what Tony said, yes, if I, we agree with you, we'd love to see that, but it's really not our decision, or we can, you know-
The zoning, the zoning board will deal with that, but it's not with us. They came here to put a cell tower and not to put a DAS system.
Right, but it is still our decision.
How?
Well, we can fight for wanting something less intrusive than a cell tower. Can you put, when you ask for a bid, can you say it can only be for a DAS system?
We could.
We could, but-
Prices that come down the law.
Yep, absolutely, you could do that.
Right, but the federal law mandates that they can put a cell tower. So, you know, we asked them the last time around, can you do this? You know, I can't remember who on the Board.
They said it's too expensive.
We were, yeah, we were driving that process.
They said it's too expensive.
We hope they do that, we really hope that they do that, but at this point in time, it's not going on town land, it may go on public property, and, you know, we'll fight it in the zoning-
Where they want it on Mr. Small's land on Tilden Road, you're in semi-wetlands, you're having a cell tower, under 53 feet, mono, it was a mono tower, that has-
We're not, we're not saying that Mr. Small's land is good land to have it either.
They're just aware that, you know, Tilden Road, the scene at roadway, that they are, they have, they don't have a ton of options. I know that 1996 FCC law does state that they can put a cell tower where there, and there was not coverage, but there has to be some recourse that between school and private land that we can come up with that will still be the letter of the law.
I hope so. Next.
Janet Tucker, 397 Tilden Road. Does that make that area commercial zone?
No.
It's a commercial property.
Where?
Where?
If it's going to go on John Small's property, that's an item of commerce, really.
But it doesn't make it, I mean, you know, we're talking that it's going to go, 100% positively going to go on Mr. Small's land. I don't know that. I mean, I know that's where they went before, and it didn't work out. I mean, I, I don't know that it's going on Mr. Small's land, I don't think we could, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe they'll come back to us with another option. They wouldn't, they wouldn't accept-
The real coastalous land up on Averland.
Yeah, they didn't want any other town properties that we put before them.
Sir, let's-
First of all, I'm not entirely sure that that's correct, from my recollections of two years ago, the discussions. But it seems to me there's two issues here. One of them is, should it be on John Small's property? And that's, and I can talk about that, but the other seems to me is, should it have gone, I'm puzzled by why, since we went to the town meeting two years ago and it was approved, there wasn't a single vote in opposition to the town putting this tower on town property. It overwhelmingly passed town meeting. I'm just puzzled at all of a sudden how it seems that there's erratic different parties. That seems to me one issue. Were you at the town meeting?
Yeah, you have good ears. Well, no, I can't remember where the site was.
There wasn't, because I actually went to people who lived on Norwell Avenue and somebody who lived on Turner Road Extension, thinking they might want to know about that because they might be close to that property, they might have an objection. I brought it to their attention, and nobody, nobody voted against it.
So what's your question? Why did it not go for this time?
Well, I'm puzzled by the Board's actions, since the town sort of overwhelmingly voted for at-town meeting, but now it seems like we've decided to override the will of the town expressed two years ago. So that's one issue.
I think, let me just address, attempt to address that issue right now. I think if the, if the town-owned land we were talking about here was town-owned land that would not affect anyone health-wise or anything else-
It was specifically the-
Sir, let me just finish, all right? I gave you your time. The Board felt now, the evidence and the opposition to it being built on a school, and I think it's not only Wampatuck, it would have been any one of the other schools in town, was enough that not to put this thing forward.
At this, at this time.
At this time.
That's the way I felt, the way I voted.
If AT&amp;T or somebody comes back with another town site, then I think the Board will probably entertain that site.
But correctly, what happens is the town will result of that action, of the action of the town meeting- But correctly, what happens is the town, the result of that action, of the, of the action of the town meeting, an RFP was issued, and that's when AT&T came back, as it's called, to move it from John Small's property to Wampertuck. And Wampertuck was identified as the site where it would go. And that was strongly led, as I understand it, by the zoning board of appeals. In particular, Mr. Warren seemed to think that that was a reasonable place to put it. I'm just trying to frame what's happening now in terms of the issue of two years ago, because it doesn't seem to me to make sense.
The only thing that you're missing is, when, when that whole process was going through, and it was gonna go on Wampertuck, there was a huge opposition to it.
No, there wasn't, not two years ago.
Yes, there was. There was. We got phone calls after phone calls, maybe not a town meeting, but it, it didn't go to town meeting.
Yes, it did.
No, I mean, afterwards, when they went to ZBA, there was a ton of opposition to it.
A lot of opposition to it.
And, and that's why AT&T pulled out and said, "Look, we're not going here right now." And it was kind of a relief to us, because we're like, "Okay, we've got, there's, there's no, there's no good place. Nobody wants a cell tower in their backyard."
Okay, and I'm not, I'm not a proponent particularly for Wampertuck. I'm just trying to find what's happening.
So it came before us last week, or a week before that, and we were under the impression that it's a sensitive issue. We're gonna put it before a town meeting to decide it. And then some people came here and talked about it, and we thought about it more, and it just, it was a two-two vote. It was a tie, so it didn't pass.
And then the second thing I wanted to say is that I've heard now, once tonight, and I've also heard in the last Lefkens meeting, that, "Well, it's gonna go down the street to the Small's property."
Well, that's the point I was trying to make, that we, you know, if that was said, it's...
Yeah, that was probably me, but, and that's just what they did last time, so I'm assuming...
Okay, but I just wanna point out that here are dueling federal laws, federal legislation. You've got this, the Cell, Federal Communications Act, which also has the Historical Preservation Act. And under the aegis of that act, the Massachusetts Historical Commission became involved. Are you aware of all of that? And I have here an report that came from Bronis Simon, who is a state archaeologist, who is also the head of the Massachusetts Archaeological, pardon me, the Massachusetts Historical Commission. And I'm happy to give you a copy of it and happy to read to you from it. But she in here says, and I don't know what their recommendations are, recommendations or requirements, I really don't understand, but they specifically call for alternatives to a cell tower on the Small property. And she lists a whole bunch of them, which I'm happy to show you now, read to you.
You can leave with Kim, we'll take a look at it.
We got that like two years ago.
Oh, did we?
Right, precisely. And so I'm just saying, that's part of, part of, so the alternatives, I think, need to be considered rather than assuming the cell tower should...
I, I don't think anyone's assuming that. I mean, that's where they came last. They might come back with some place completely different. I mean, I have no idea. We might have a whole different group of people up here six months ago, from a completely different, I just don't know. The Small property was mentioned.
And I would love to see town leaders take some lead on this, and the DAS system, which is working fine in Hull.
We completely support other technologies. We would prefer it.
I'd love to see town leaders take some leadership on that.
What did we pass a bylaw to do that, to put the, to use the telephone poles for that technology? We would much rather prefer that than a sound, but they didn't come to us and ask us, "Which one do you want?"
Right, but maybe you need to put out an RFP.
Who's name, sorry?
Hold on, one second, one second. We're not gonna have a...
Can you put out an RFP to ask for that?
We could put out, yes, we could put out an RFP insisting on that. We could. Whether we would or not, I don't know. I can speak to that, but, you know.
No, but that's the kind of leadership I think a lot of people are looking for.
Well, we try to, we try to give as much leadership as we can, and sometimes we're successful, and sometimes we're not.
Who is, who is he? For the record.
Yeah, what's your name and address, just so we...
Steven Tucker, and I live at three ninety-seven Tilden Road.
Thanks, Steven.
Thanks.
Charlie?
Nope.
Okay, it was, okay, we're gonna have this and wrap it up, because we'll discuss this a couple of weeks in a row. Go ahead.
All right, well, quickly, two years ago, why the opposition didn't grow as soon as we would have liked it to, was because when the issue was brought up, it was brought up as two sixty-six Tilden Road, and many of us didn't realize that that meant Wampertuck School. We were thinking maybe the moving grounds, and that's why that opposition didn't grow until we were informed, I believe by the principal of the school, that there were, that there was like a meeting held to talk about the cell phone tower. And that meeting was held after the town meeting. So that's why that opposition didn't grow.
You can just give your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carla Breitenstein, twenty-eight Marshall Avenue. And so then, also, wireless companies will tell us that this technology costs too much, but that's not our problem. That's their problem, that they wanna bring the technology here. And so maximizing the industry's profits is not what Congress had in mind when it intended to encourage the deployment of wi, of wireless service to all of America by passing such federal legislation as the Telecommunications Act or the American Recovery Act and the Investment Act of two thousand and nine. So the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six expressly preserves local zoning authority over placement, construction, and modification of cell towers. So we have the right to use zoning laws to protect our neighborhoods. We have the right to say, "No, we don't want a cell tower. We want the DAS system."
We will, I, I would think, I would think that, that with all the improvements made in, in cell towers, and that, and I can't say, because, you know, I don't know what the next RFP's gonna say, of course, but I would think that the town would attempt to have a cell tower with the most, with the newest technology, wherever it may be. I think we've heard that loud and clear.
And who puts together the RFP?
Probably the town administrator.
You know, that's not the discussion before the board.
I know, we're not, we're really getting way off, way off.
Okay.
We rejected it.
We rejected it. This discussion's good, and I hear it, we all hear it, but we rejected to, to put it to town meeting. And what we're doing tonight is to reject the bids, because the motion's been made and seconded. Unless there's something really new and meaningful, I don't wanna shut anybody off.
Just, I just wanna frame the discussion. Because of that FCC rule, it would be nice to be able to frame the discussion, so we don't get trumped again. And so if we can frame the discussion on an RFP for the DAS, and they don't come in and trump local zoning laws, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Poked?
Aye.
Vote is two to one to reject the contract, to reject the bids. Moving forward. Budget articles against intermediate school. I'm sorry.
You could wait another half hour.
Yeah. I thought that was quicker than it was, but thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience.
This discussion technology.
I didn't think so. That's why I looked puzzled at him.
How are you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Gentlemen, how are you? Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you for waiting, as I said.
Doug Brown and Ashley Prestor from Derky Brown.
How are you guys?
How are you?
Good seeing you.
Yeah.
You too.
So...
Go ahead.
There it is.
There it is. Glad you, go ahead.
So, just a quick recap. We're, we're slowly moving our way through our scope of services. We have presented to you our existing conditions analysis, and you, in our earlier phase of this project, we had presented a few options for reuse of different portions of the school, and as a school, or as you've selected as the potential town offices. This is the scheme that you, you chose, and you have asked us to look at a couple of variations on this scheme, particularly with respect to the, what we refer to as the C Wing, the newest portion of the addition on the right there. And really, the purpose of, of meeting tonight is, the next phase of our work is to provide you a little more specific analysis of this concept and its potential cost. And in doing so, we'd like to ask you some questions tonight, and get a little more specific information. And we're, we're, we're just trying to make this as accurate as possible, knowing that it is a conceptual estimate, and ultimately, we're gonna have to go through a programming exercise, or whoever you're working with, we'll have to go through a programming exercise to make sure we understand exactly how these different town functions fit into this building. This, again, is quite diagrammatic. But, so, so specifically, we, and we do have these jotted down. I don't...
I apologize if you don't have any available to be sent out. I don't know if you would like to have a copy of our notes here, if it's...
There may be a lot to sort of answer directly tonight, and we recognize that we may have to sort of wait a little bit to get these answers. But we thought we'd get some, some feedback as best we can tonight. The, one of the program elements that you identified is a community center. But other than that, there's no specific program for it. So when we're doing something like this, we need to provide narrative to the, to the professional cost estimator who's going through this exercise. We need to provide as much narrative as we can about exactly what we're doing to the school. We know that there's exterior envelope improvement that's likely to be similar under any of these schemes. You know, you're gonna be doing the, the shell, and the roof, and the windows, and so forth. But what happens inside is, is different. So the variations will be sort of, can we use the configuration of the building as it is? The rooms, the way they exist, and just sort of fit into it? Or do we need to really, you know, blow out sections of it and, and make larger spaces where there aren't, and et cetera? So, so I think out of all of the program elements, a lot of them, we got good, good information from, Patricia, you know, collected a bunch of stuff, gave it to us. We made some enlargements to that program based on expected growth or deficiencies, known deficiencies now. But in other cases, like the community center, we really have nothing to go on. So I don't know if there's any guidance we can get there or not.
I, you know, I, I think he's just looking for some, some of a consensus from the three of us. You know, I don't know. I certainly don't think, when I thought of communities, when I heard the term, that we're talking about a full-blown, multimillion-dollar community center within the gate school. And we have, we have, we have a gym there. We have a building, community center in, in the old Pier Forty-four that, that yet to be determined.
Yep.
But to me, the community center would be a, a, a meeting room type place where, because meetings could be held. I, I don't see, I don't see a real, you know, once you get into the recreation component with ping-pong tables and things like that, you've got a whole different, becomes more of a recreational room. And if that's what we're looking, that's fine, I'm not against it, but I didn't envision that. I thought that all would take place in the recreation end of the, of the building.
Yep.
So a community center, to me, would be a meeting room type thing, a reception area, that type thing.
Community center, to me, would mean an area where all age groups could share this facility. You know, I mean, I think it was mentioned...
After-school kind of program?
After-school, during-school, rights...
Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, all that kind of stuff, yeah.
Everything. You know, I think it really came from, you know, when we're talking about relocating or building a new senior center. I think it was Rick Murray that, you know, said years ago, some years ago, you know, called, you know, community center, and it, you know, it sounded more inviting for different age groups. That's what...
But they're different things under this program.
Right.
There's a distinct senior center and, and a distinct community center.
Right.
So are you trying to find out whether it's an open space, or it's offices, or it's...
I'm really, I'm, honestly, at the end of this, we wanna make sure that we, we know that the amount of space that you're gonna end up with is appropriate for how you intend to use it.
How much space is that?
That's eleven thousand, nine thousand feet.
That's a big area.
It's big, that's the point.
Sixty-two hundred, just the green space in the, in the A Wing, and then you add the gym on top of it, which is another seven, eight thousand.
Yeah, gym is the gym.
Gym is, the gym is separate.
So, so I was...
Sixty-one...
Sixty-two hundred square feet. That includes the corridor right now, so if you take it out, you probably have about six classrooms right there.
So the green area in the middle is about six thousand square feet. That's a...
One floor.
That's a big room.
Yeah, and it's divided now, so...
But, 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 right, it's, it's...
It's a lot of space.
It's a lot of space. So, yeah, much too much space for, probably much too much space for just meetings. We, you know, the meetings don't have much more than thirty or forty people in there. And the ones that have more are so infrequent that you wouldn't have, you'd never have three hundred people unless you start to have town meeting in there.
You actually have ability to hold meetings in other places in this building. That's the kind of thing we're looking at, is that the program right now, before we even get into what's happening with C Wing, is that the program, you have these functions in different areas, and we almost wonder if we're just fill, if we wanna make sure that there's program to fill those spaces, and that we're not just filling the space because it's there.
Right.
Because if you're gonna, if we're gonna put in the estimate, the cost to renovate that, we wanna make sure that it, it's being used, and, you know, it's either a, an office space or a meeting space. Those have different costs.
If we said, cut that, just hypothetically, cut that six thousand feet in half, what would you do with the, with the three thousand that you...
Well, we're sort of jumping to this one, but, but one of the things that, as we stared at this diagram after, after you made this, this selection, we, we, it occurred to us that it will be important to make sure we, we understand the difference in parking requirements you'll have with a new town facility versus the existing school, the way it's operating now. And it, and it may be that you have enough, and it may be that you don't have enough. But clearly, if you were to consider demolishing a portion of that wing...
C Wing or A?
No, no. What do we call that one?
A Wing in the back.
A Wing. You, you could easily, and you could see, sort of between the tennis courts and that existing parking, you, you could easily establish...
Additional parking.
More prominent chunk of parking.
It's, most certainly is. Two floors, and it's solid. I mean, I'd have a hard job...
I'm, I'm not necessarily advocating that at all. I'm just sort of saying...
C Wing's one thing, you know, but, you know.
So you have both the senior center and the community center in that back wing?
No.
Well, the, the plan you approved in February had the senior center originally located in the lower level of the gymnasium, and we, we were looking at that and understanding some of the other discussions. It would probably make more sense to flip these and put the senior center over here, or archive over here.
Absolutely.
Which, that's just changing the color. That's not anything...
Well, we talked about the autonomy that the senior center needs to have from the rest of the complex.
That's right. The other, the other option always was over where C Wing is now, on a portion of that as an independent structure.
Yeah.
If the purple blonde basically have it over here as a, as a piece. I mean, in either case, it has its own identity.
If you didn't do that, I think you, 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 you know, you would probably have sufficient parking. However, then you go back to where, where the appropriate place to enter this building is. And it's, it's, you know, it's not quite as ideal to have the parking down at, at the end where C Wing is, but I think it would be fine. And you would, I think in that case, you would probably work on a more prominent entry at that end of the building. Now, on one of the plans, there was an auditorium.
This one is the one you approved that had the auditorium. We, we actually talked about...
This is the lower level here, but...
Yeah, we're, we're showing right now, this is the cafeteria level over here. We actually proposed on the, the scheme B, which is the one you, one of us were forward with, is actually reestablish the original auditorium from the nineteen thirty addition.
It was a two-story space, double-height space.
We call it council chamber here, but it very easily could be a multipurpose kind of auditorium space.
Currently where the library is now.
Yeah, the, the advantage is that framing was put in in the seventies, you can pull it right back out.
The auditorium be on the second floor?
Second and third floor. Be a two-story space.
That, that just seems so counterintuitive to me, where every town hall in the state is converting their auditoriums to office space. I mean, they're getting rid of space we might be thinking of recreating. I just, it, it's kind of surprising to me.
Yeah, you, it's not, it's, you know, a lot of towns ask for an auditorium... Yeah, it's not, you know, a lot of towns ask for an auditorium, some kind of public meeting space.
How many people could it-
As well as the council chambers.
How, well, that might be the other option, but how many, how many folks would that hold, that auditorium space?
We'd have to do a study.
Yeah, two floors.
You know.
Yeah, because it had a balcony and everything around it, in the '30s.
We're looking for, I mean, we only have one auditorium in the town, and it's at the high school.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's small, but, you know, we, this is our, you know, if we have anything on the agenda that means anything, there's people pouring out in the hallways. So not only are there theater programs in town that need another place to go and practice, but town hall needs a place where you can seat 100, 200 people for just a active meeting.
So that would be, that would be the idea of that space.
Yeah, but I wasn't thinking two floors.
Two floors, well, two floors is a lot more than a hundred. We might have 100 people at a meeting a couple of times a year, numerous, a few times a year, but certainly not enough to, I don't, not two floors.
The one reason we suggested, and by all means, I mean, we're at such treetop level here, I mean, when you get into the detail of it, you can really look at the program of it. The one thing that struck me when I walked in there was the fact of how flat and how pancake the media center feels right now. You walk into that library and you just feel so, because it's so expansive yet so low. And the idea that that originally was a two-story space, that was both a gym and an auditorium, that it just is something that struck us. You could very easily keep the floor in there, and you have a whole nother area of square footage on the upper floor to program into whatever you want.
And it would cost less.
Yeah, exactly. Less demo. I think the one thing, going back to something we hit on in September, which is then kind of led into things we were talking about with the C-Wing, is that the program that we have identified for the town hall, community center, senior center, everything, didn't meet the size of the Gates Middle School without the C-Wing. We were getting close to it, but we were probably programming in the 65, 70,000-square-foot range, maybe even 75. But the Gates is 100,000 square feet, and the C-Wing alone is 13. So you're looking at about 87 if you take the C-Wing out. So as it is, we're not even reaching that level. So the thought of programming something in C-Wing or tearing it down and building something else there means that we either have to say, are we going to mothball another wing of the school, or tear down something else, or find more program, or?
I think that's a really good point. I guess, I guess from a cost estimate exercise, even if it is mothballing it, you have to assign a cost to it, you're still going to heat it and sprinkler it and so forth. And, you know, if you don't fit it out to its final use, you have an expense associated with just stabilizing it and maintaining it.
Yeah, we would still do the windows, the roof, we'd put the heat in, and then we just leave it as the school. You know, leave the, all, exactly as it is, just close the doors and shut down that wing, which is something we can do if we feel that that space is something that the town would need long-term.
Well, as an architect, architecturally, what value do you think that building does if we're going to pour several million dollars into it for a finished product in terms of the overall envelope and aesthetic appeal of the building? I mean, the original appropriation for this building was to look at the historic facade of it and to maintain that historic component of it for the beauty that's there. And the Historical Commission was clearly supportive of that. I mean, clearly, there's space there that was desperately needed for the school, but, I mean, if we're going to pay a lot of money to retrofit this to whatever degree, you know, it should look like we did it, I think.
Completely.
Yeah.
There's a lot of value sitting there, as we said.
I think when we were looking at the plans, you know, many of the plans were similar to this plan, so we said, let's look at one that keeps the C-Wing or part of the C-Wing also, just so we have something to compare and contrast to. We certainly don't want to put money into a building and not use the space. I mean, that's crazy.
Right.
So if we don't need the 13,000 square foot in the decrepit section, then we need parking, then it certainly makes sense to put the parking-
I think that with any-
Especially if we're going to add the auditorium now, because we'll have folks for productions or whatever, we'll need the parking.
I think, I can't come up with any, and I've been looking at this for almost a year now, and I haven't been able to find enough program to fill 100,000 square feet. And C-Wing doesn't have any character that's worthy of, in my opinion. I don't know if I'm speaking-
I thought it was 90. Not that it's much, but it's 10%. Is it 90 or is it 100?
I had 100.
It's 90 and then-
Maybe 98 and change, 95, I'm sorry. So, I'm rounding.
If the space needs, did, we have town hall, council on aging, add up to, Ashley, you must, I think you guys did that before, and you added, what, 25% onto a line?
Yeah, I, if you, yeah, it's 95,000 square feet, and you take off the C-Wing, and you're down to about 79.
Okay.
And we were basically just about filling it at that point. But that's with inflating everything and having a community center that was really unprogrammed. We really didn't understand.
And 11,000 square feet of senior center, which we still don't, we really haven't justified with the program you've given us yet.
I mean, it would be hard for us to sit down and say, this is what the senior center would look like. I mean, you'd actually have to go to the users of the facility and say-
Right, and we actually did some work on that in the facilities planning committee's meeting tonight.
Oh, great.
Having a tour of the, their meeting is actually at the senior center, and there's a list of building challenges, but also what it's lacking relative to others. So I can get that to you, so, yeah.
That's great. There's so many models of senior centers, there, a lot of them being built these days. And, you know, we could look at some models with you if that's helpful, but the 11,000 strikes us as probably a little bigger than it needs to be.
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah, I think the current one was about 3,500 square feet, and the plans that you, that you town did about 10 years ago was about 6,000. So then double that again. That's why the request for 11,000, we were kind of, well, okay, we'll put it in, but we just don't know what's there right now.
Would there be any thought, I guess, and I just, this thought just came to me now, with college campuses looking to the suburbs and looking for satellite campuses all the time, and we talked about, you know, we're probably stretching, we probably have some of these areas probably bigger than we really need. And we talked about mothballing the back part of the A-Wing, I guess. Would there be any merit in mothballing that area, or in thinking about going out to see if there's any tenants in the colleges, ocean campus centers that we had that could go in and pay rent in the back of it? And I just, I'm not advocating this, I'm just tossing it out, it's the first thought I had. Is there any merit to that thought, rather than just have, rather than have auditoriums that are three times the size of what we want, and a senior center that is larger than we, than we need? Is there any merit to that at all? Does anyone, and I'll leave it at that, I won't even ask for a comment, I guess, just, I would just rather see the entire school used. And if we had, if we had to, you know, rent part of it out and get an income from it, from a, from a college who was looking for a satellite campus, how bad is that? That's fine. Or something else, it may not be a college. There may be something that would rent it out during the day or at night.
Well, I think what Doug said is that we might not be able to get all the answers tonight. I think one of the things that we're looking at is if it's going to be classroom or meeting space, or office, or that it has the different costs. And that's where we're kind of at right now, is that we kind of have an idea of what you're looking for, but not what those spaces are fit out. You know, you know, are you looking to do a complete gut of this build, of that building, down to structure and bring it back up? Are you looking to do a moderate gut, where you take some walls down? Or do you, are you looking to kind of move in very lightly and just kind of use the spaces as is? And that's a different economy of scale, too.
Our sense is it's somewhere in between, where, where any efficiency that you can gain by using spaces that exist and what you're really doing are the infrastructure brand-new. You want, as Patricia pointed out, you want this to be a modern building when you're done, while respecting its historic character. And so, you know, doing the electrical and plumbing and heating systems properly requires a certain amount of getting into walls and, you know, that sort of thing. So that seems to be a necessary part of it. And then with that comes new finishes. But if you don't have to dismantle a lot of the plan of the building and then rebuild it into new room shapes, you're going to save a lot of money. So I think the option would be to try to fit the departments and, you know, not, not without, there'll be exceptions to that. Obviously, at the end, it has to, it has to function, you know.
At the end, it has to look like a new-
Absolutely.
Building on the inside.
Yes.
And we do have, one of the major problems right now is handicap accessibility.
Yeah, yeah. All of that has to be solved.
So, you know, that's, I mean, that's just the stairwells that go all, I mean, Sean, you know, they're steaming, they're all over the place. You know, a lot of that stuff has to be cleaned up and this stuff, traffic flow. In terms of, you know, like a senior center, it needs seven offices and a, and a-
Yep.
2,000 square foot open spa, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that, we don't almost need to get into that kind of level at this point. We can tell our estimator, we need a senior center, and they kind of know percentage of its office, percentage of its open space.
But I think Tricia brings up a good point. We don't want it to look like this 50-something-year-old building over there.
Well, we've had 54 years of trying to fit into a building-
And we understand that.
-that was not functional. I mean, I think we're somewhere between selective rehab and not doing it as cheap as possible. I mean, it's important that the departments have the functional space they need to do 21st century town business, just like it's important our children have 21st century learning environments. So it's probably, like you said, Doug, going to be a combination of both.
But not that the interior is going to look like this tiled hallway. You know, we don't want to keep the-
And the different levels that, right now, everybody has to negotiate and things like that. I mean, there'll still be a different pedestrian traffic coming into that building.
I'm sure we mentioned this before, but have you seen Hingham?
I have not.
You haven't? And that's exactly what they did, and I think that's exactly where Tricia was going. When you walk down the halls-
That may be worth going to Hingham.
When you walk down the halls, the wooden floors and, you know, outside maintains the character of the building. That's exactly what Tricia's talking about.
That would be, that would be a worthwhile trip.
It's very similar, and the facade is preserved, and the entrances are all in the side and the back.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, if we could point to some renovation that, like that-
Or better.
It's, or-
But the other option, Joe, too, is like, Hingham had so much space as well, the regional dispatch centers in there now.
It is, that's right.
You know, because they had so much.
They had extra space.
So there might be a regional, you know, agency. So I know that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, for 30 years, was in the West Springfield City Hall.
Yeah.
So there might be those kinds of things that you-
Well, I meant in schools, I meant, you know, that's-
That's a good idea. Rent paying tenants is what you're thinking.
Yeah, rent paying nice tenants.
Part of this exercise, then, can be in preparing these narratives and looking at the programs as carefully as we can, just verifying what, what might be effectively residual space that you could consider other options for.
Yeah.
And just assume that you want to keep it all, but, except for C-Wing, and then, and then we'll tell you how much you get left over.
I mean, anyone, we all have, we've all looked at that building and been through that building. It, you know, you'd have a difficult time filling that building.
Yeah, it's a lot of space.
That is a large, large, large building.
One thing we have tried to do is that by keeping the town hall mostly in the old, in the 1917 to 1930s portion of the building, and then you have the community center or the archives off in the A-Wing and the gym. So you, you're not going to have someone having to go to a town assessor and a town clerk that could be, have mobility impairment, having to go use an elevator to get to those different departments. So it helps a little bit with that, but we can definitely-
I think Sean's suggestion about taking a road trip to Hingham Town Hall is a good one, because in, being familiar with a lot of the town halls, the newly-built ones of the past 15 or 20 years, Hingham still stands out to be the jewel, I think, of, you know, there are some good ones around, there's some very nice ones around. But Hingham seems to have done it right, and they're one of the earliest ones to do it.
Yeah. Good. So, um-
So I'll get some more info for you, and we should touch base-
I guess we should talk about schedule a little bit. Of course, part of this is going to be depending on our consultant, our ass estimator, but I'm thinking it's-
Let's talk early next week.
Yeah.
Can I just ask you guys, and I'm certainly not going to hold you to it, just humor me and answer me. $20 million sticks in my head. That was to remodel this as a junior high, you know? Am I, am I right to, to you guys?
Yeah, that was a number, yeah.
All right, okay. And it was rough. To do, chop off the C-Wing, where was it?
It's right underneath that board there.
You know, to do that. Phew. I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm not going to hold you to it.
I really hesitate.
There's a reporter in the room, and I don't want that to be the headline.
You'll have, you'll have that answer sooner than-
All right, all right.
I just figured I'd ask.
And let me just make a point. The 20 includes all the question. This is a really important point. Whatever numbers we give you are going to be 2013 construction numbers. Clearly, you guys have a timeline that you're looking at here, and escalation will have to be, you know, we, you can give us an end date, you can say, we anticipate this might be constructible in year.
Well, we can do the math. You'll say it goes up 3% a year, or whatever.
Yes, that's exactly right.
I think, yeah. And we know this might be step five in a 10-step process, so it's all those other things that are coming before this, and, you know.
But we do have some, and we need to talk further offline about, we've appropriated money for ESCO while ready for this building, because whether it morphs into something new and wonderful or stays the same, we still have the obligation of that big empty building and the systems that need to improve. So that's a little bit of an offset on the total cost, too, so.
You also have some, some ongoing maintenance, which since the, you know, we looked at it beginning of last year, is probably going to come up in the next few years.
Well, we're putting $60,000 worth of new doors into it at town meeting next week, month, too. So there's some capital that's taking place, because it's not going anywhere for four or five years. And even if we build a new school, you know, it's going to have kids in it. So there's still going to be some capitalization in it.
And those are real numbers, but they're, they're numbers that unfortunately, we're not going to be able to capture in the kind of the scope of what we do, just because it's, it's a broader look, but.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks.
See you again.
I didn't get my answer.
No, you didn't get an answer. Maybe, I think Ruth might have been dozing anyway, she might not have heard that.
That's so interesting.
Uh, we took care of the cell tower bid. Have a good night. We move on to discussion votes and budget articles. We also, we did the video, and anyone that didn't see the video will run it again if you'd like at the end of the meeting.
We'll put it on the website.
It'll be-
You didn't see the whole thing, Tony, did you?
No.
I just really want to see my part.
That's all, that's all any of us want to see. We know, not your part, but we want to see our own part. Your part was really good.
No, thank you.
Really good. Discussion vote.
Oh, it took 30 takes.
I know, it was awful.
Can you do it faster, can you do it faster?
They gave you about two, two minutes to say something, and they said you get thirty sec, ten, twenty seconds to do it, twenty-two seconds.
And you do it in twenty-two, and they're like, too long.
Yeah, cut it, cut it down. Moving on, discussion vote, budgets articles, Tricia. Could you tell us, or Kim, tell us?
By my, by my reckoning, and I'm hoping the town administrators are on the same page as I am.
Not literally yet, hold on, give me a second.
There are two articles, I believe, that have not been voted by the board of selectmen on page two, I gave you a summary.
Yeah.
Did you get that, it was a separate piece of paper? Of all the articles, and who's speaking to.
Right.
Yep.
And then I put a little code in.
Looks like this.
What's been voted and what's not, and there are two articles, petition articles on the second page, that has not been, uh, voted.
Which ones? Right here, Tony. So article number twelve.
Yeah, yeah, I think I got it, must be in here, is it?
Oh.
See?
Oh, back here.
I'm sure I have it, Kim.
So the C-Wall one, and the Congress one.
Right.
Those are the only two?
Yep.
Yes. I didn't know if you wanted to.
Did the C-Wall decide to IP theirs, or how is, what's the status of that?
The, my understanding from what Mr. Ball represented at the advisory committee Thursday night, was that they would IP it, but they would like an opportunity to address the floor to state why they did it.
But they're gonna IP it on the floor, so we probably have to give an opinion, or whether we support or don't support it?
Um, are we support you?
We moved to support it to, for right now.
I'll tell you what I told the advisory committee, and that, that just because they moved to IP it, does not mean the sense of the meeting will, I mean, the meeting has the right to determine that, and it might potentially come up.
So this is article twenty-six, which is to borrow, raise, and appropriate or transfer available funds three hundred thousand dollars for C-Walls, so I will vote not to support article twenty-six.
By not supporting it, I mean, well, all right, I know what you're, all right, okay, even though if we supported it, would be, you know, from what Tricia just said, they're gonna IP it, but this, they don't have to, you just said.
No, I'm, usually, things when they're IP'd on the floor, they don't get voted, however.
It's possible.
It's town meeting, it's on the warrant, it's the pleasure of the meeting as to what happens, so as a result.
All right, that's, that's fine, Tony made a motion not to support, and I will second that.
Motion made and seconded not to support, uh, discussion, all in favor of Tony's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the next one is twenty-nine, which is that, uh, the petition for the US Congress with the PAC dollars, I gotta tell you, I still don't completely have a grasp of it. I know she sent us a lot of material to review, and I haven't gone through it all yet, so I don't.
Could we make a motion at town meeting, when she did send, send a lot of stuff over, yes to the, I think I read some of it, we could make a, we could do that, but just.
Give your opinion, uh, position on floor town meeting?
Yeah.
Then you'll have the benefit of two other members as well.
Yeah, we could do that, or we could vote it tonight, we can.
So, vote to postpone, or how do you, what do you?
We have a, we have a meeting at, before town meeting.
You would vote to give your recommendation on the floor of town meeting?
So vote to give the recommendation on the floor of town meeting.
Yeah, I'll second that, do you have a copy of that, what Mike keep in that?
Motion's been made and seconded to make the recommendation on that on the floor of town meeting, uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Look at all the shows.
That's unanimous, moving right along.
I have one question on, on number fourteen.
Number fourteen.
Joe and I were just at the advisory committee, and we, we did vote this one at the last meeting, that was, that's the meals tax.
Yes.
And the copy that they had didn't have the language that we added at the end, that said not to go to the operating budget, but I know we added that.
But you didn't.
We didn't vote it, so we have to vote it tonight?
And then, you discussed earmarking it, you didn't vote on the earmarking, so there could be no change to the warrant, because you didn't vote that.
So do we have to vote it, or is it too late to vote?
The warrant's at the printer and posted, the way to do it is you'd amend it on the floor in the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought we did it at the last meeting.
We voted the last meeting to, the motion, it was included in the motion, Tony included it.
Right at the end, I thought Joe said.
Was to ensure that it did not go into the operating budget, that I can guarantee you.
There was discussion about that.
You did not vote, you did not vote, you discussed it, but you did not vote, and that's.
Okay.
We can go back and look at the tape.
Well, it doesn't matter.
No, doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
Because it's already, it's already done, so we just have to know, well, I guess what we, we should make it known, that our intention is to make the motion on the floor to say that it's not gonna go to the operating budget, is that?
Yes, that's.
Fair to say?
Yep, that's fair to say.
And I think you'll find that was in our discussions, we all agreed on that in the discussion.
No.
Right, and the email that I gave you from town council today also underscored the fact that any earmarking is up to the board, so you can do it even without town meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
But at, at the advisory committee, it was brought up that if the other article passes, that they could go for a special appropriation, what do they, what do they call it, a special, you go, I guess Campbell would have to get some special permission, so that if you created that stabilization fund, that you could earmark that money, you know?
It would require a special, a town meeting to approve a special act of the legislature to hold and reserve that, because it's taking a statutory power away from the board.
Right. So, and that's what I think their intention is, if it, if it, if this all passes, but we'll, we'll explain it to the town at the town meeting, and see what they want to do. But our intention of the board is to take that money and put it towards economic development, capital issues, C-Walls, these types of, um, issues.
New schools.
School, right, the master plan.
Yeah.
As opposed to just putting it into departmental budgets. So we don't have to vote anything else?
It doesn't appear so.
No, that one, Josh, Tony, I have my.
I, uh, I think, no, maybe I don't, that's all right, I'll get another one. The, the, the meals tax, just to go back to this one second, and I certainly don't want to belabor it at all, um, we've, we've come before the economic development committee's article, correct?
Yeah, we're fourteen, twenty-five years.
Because, I mean, I, I think the meals tax is important, I think it's, it's, it's important to be earmarked for certain things, and we've had enough discussion on that, uh, there are some things that if town meeting voted to earmark it for, I probably wouldn't support it, all right, but I'm just wondering now whether I'll have that opportunity, uh, maybe just, you know, I'll probably have an opportunity, those who feel the same way I do, would have an opportunity to vote on the article, yes or no, I guess that'd be the only time, right, you wouldn't be able to necessarily.
Well, we could change it on the floor to be whatever we want, if you wanted to earmark it for new high school chairs or something.
But, yeah, but we, we will have been, uh, if our article was defeated, okay, the only article left would be the one to put it towards economic development.
Unless you made a motion to change that.
Unless you made a motion to change that, too, would that be allowed?
Yes, you could amend it on town meeting.
Can you amend the citizens?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But it just can't be out of the scope of the.
It may, well, yeah, that probably wouldn't be, okay.
No, you can, any article's amendable on the floor.
But you can't say I want to change it from, you know, cars to bananas.
Yeah.
Yes, you can, if it's amended and voted, it's within the scope of the article, the article is the meals tax.
Right.
With the secondary, the use, yeah.
Okay.
And again, those are questions, good questions for the moderator as well.
Okay, uh, we've had the town administrator's report, did we have that at the same time we had the video, or not?
The town administrator, despite her best intentions, has no report this week.
Well, we'll consider the video, your report, and that was good, other business, correspondence, minutes. Other business, I just have a couple of things, let me, other business, Rick Murray wrote a, an email memo to us a week or two ago, about the, that he'd like to see a committee established to, to look at the, uh, our coast and coastal issues going forward, address coastal issues that, that will have an effect on situat twenty or thirty, forty years from now, and I'd like to put that on a next agenda, or Kim, if we could, to formation of that committee, if the board has an objection, you know, and I personally think that, you know, we've seen in the last five or six years that, that there is a need to look to the future, I don't know what that necessarily means, but we have, we have issues with, with our coast, and, and what's happening to it, that aren't gonna get any better as, as the years go on, they're gonna become a bigger issue, and a bigger issue, and a bigger issue, so if he wants to, uh, work on that, I think it's a plus for future generations, and the other one is I'd like to see a committee, which I'd be, I will might be a selectman, but I'd like to see a committee formed, and we could put this on the same agenda if there's no objections, uh, to look at ways to, to fund the grand plan, uh, there's a lot of good ideas out there, the grand plan is something we're all, we're all in favor of, but we have to also recognize, and I think we do, that the cost of that is something that the town of Situ has, has never experienced before, and I think we, as a town, have responsibility not to, as we've just done in the past, here it is, voted up or down, yes or no, but rather give the, the residents an opportunity, uh, show them other ways that actions can be taken to lower their cost, in this case, so important, because I think that if we want it to pass, we have to bring that cost down to something that, that's livable, and, uh, so I'd like a committee to be formed, to meet over the next five or six months, before next fall's town meeting, come back to the board of selectmen with some recommendations, uh, of things that could go towards the cost of the grand plan, the board of selectmen can accept them, or reject them, or whatever, so if there's no objection to that, Kim, could you put that on same time? Other business?
Just one, one thing, if I, Tricia, about every two months or so, a resident will ask me when, if we ever gonna see Verizon files, I, I don't have any answer, the last thing I recall was really the balls in their court, they, have they run some of the hardware, but it's up to them if they want to bring it to Situ.
Yeah, I had, because Workiddy asked me about it, too, let me go, I have an email from them, that's probably a few months old, about their position, I'll try and find it, Sean, and touch base with you.
Okay, I guess other towns around us have it, so.
No, they gave us a pretty detailed response the last time we asked, and it escapes me right now what it said, but I'll dig it out and see if we can.
All right, okay, thank you, that was it?
Yep.
That's all I had.
That's it, Tony?
Got two quick things, one, I usually talk about sports teams, but last week I was remiss, as I didn't mention, the high school drama group put on a production of The Crucible, and Ruth was there, it was a phenomenal production that they did here, I don't know, there were probably twenty-five or thirty kids in there, and it was, it was unbelievable production they did here, and then they went to Norwell in a competition, and they, I think they won that competition, and moved on to another one, and placed very high there, and I think four or five of the kids got, you know, honorable mentions, and it was just great, great play, and it was good to see, you know, the other programs that are going on in the town, and great entertainment for the town that's available at a local level, so that group was great, I know Lisa Rafferty was involved in it, I'm not gonna name names, because I'll forget a hundred of them, other than my niece Ariel, she did a great job. And, um, the, uh, last thing I want to mention is the parade on Sunday, which I thought was a very good event, a good crowd, considering it was cold, um, you know, I think when all of us hit the, hit the harbor, it, you felt that, that cold breeze coming in, but there was a lot of people out there, really good feedback, um, and I, I just wanted to acknowledge Joe for, um, being possibly his last parade as a, as a selectman, and the cheers for him throughout the.
Unless we have another one in the next couple of weeks.
The cheers for him, and the people shouting out to him, and thanking him for his time and effort, was just outstanding, and sad to see, um, sad to see it as your last, but I hope you enjoyed it, and.
I did enjoy it, thank you.
And the feedback was phenomenal.
Thank you.
And, uh, and the people that put it on did a great job, unfortunately, we all missed the parade, because we're in the front, and by the time we get back around, we've missed it, but I heard it was great entertainment, so, um, thanks, and, and thank you, Joe, for, for.
Thank you, thank you.
Bringing us with you.
It was great, it was a lot of fun, as it always is, a lot of fun, so, uh, moving on, I think that's about it.
Move to sign, or adjourn and sign documents, or, do we have to do minutes first?
Just may.
Uh, move the minutes of May eighth.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?